Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission Meeting. We are commissioned, appointed by the mayor and the city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the governing body on planning items. Please note that the governing body rules state that public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the Planning Commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the governing body. Tonight's case is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the governing body next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. Some of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the Planning Department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then, we will receive public testimony. Comments are limited to four minutes. For agenda items that do not involve public hearings, public comment is allowed provided the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Finally, at the end of regular business, the Commission will entertain general comment regarding matters relating to the Commission business, provided the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Amanda, please take the roll.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Herron.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Cow.
Here.
Mr. Nager.
Here.
Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Mr. Chilobin.
Here.
And Ms. Hannan.
Here.
We have enough for our court.
Thank you. Next, can I get the approval? Can everyone take a moment to read the minutes from the August 19 meeting? And if you have any questions, let us know.
Madam Chair, I move to approve.
All right.
Second it.
All right, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Amanda, can you please take the vote?
Ms. Hannan?
Aye.
Mr. Chilobin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
And Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Are the minutes passed?
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is recognition of outgoing planning commissioners. Does staff have something formal to say? Or?
Thank you, we do. So we've got certificates that I'll hand out here quickly. Just a couple words. So we deal with Cory and Jim outside of this realm, and they do very good at their jobs there, so we're happy to deal with them. They brought a very good perspective to this Planning Commission, and we're going to miss that. And we wish them the best going forward. Rhian, India.
Sure, yeah, I would just echo those comments. I know that this is not a light lift. It's a long commitment with long terms, so appreciate your dedication and hard work in bringing some really good perspectives and value to the group. So, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that I started with Jim a couple of years ago, getting trained together. So it's been nice having you to my left-hand side, to my right, and to my left-hand side. It's been nice having you as well, Cory. I've appreciated both of your insights and perspectives. Thank you. Do any other commissioners want to say words?
Well, I do.
Okay. You are a commissioner still, yes.
Yeah, and really, what I wanted to do is just thank all the planning staff, because you guys are awesome and do really good work. Makes our lives easy. So, thank you.
I also want to reiterate that, too. It's been six years. It's been a good learning experience. I've really enjoyed it. It's kind of cool to see the behind-the-scenes, because I've seen the other side, too. So I really appreciated my time here, and thank you.
All right. Let's proceed, then. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest ex parte by members on the -- oh, well?
Yes. So on PUD 2413, which I think is the first one we're talking about today, one of the tenants of what was formerly Stout Elementary is the Topeka Symphony. I am the treasurer for the Friends of the Topeka Symphony, as well as a board member. I don't know anything about this application beyond what's in the public record. I didn't learn about it until it was in the packet, so I do feel able to make an unbiased decision, but I wanted to let people know that.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
On 2413, also, one of my clients appears to be a tenant here. I also knew nothing about this project through them, and I don't have involvement with it, but I don't think that would change my judgment in any way, so.
I, too, on 2413, have had business relationships with the applicant, but I do feel that I could make an unbiased decision. Anyone else? Been hanging out with CRC? Okay. All right. Seeing none, let's go ahead and get started on the first case, PUD 2413 by Community Resources Council. Annie?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is a request to rezone the property from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to PUD to accommodate R1 uses plus a community resource center to adaptively reuse the existing building. Okay. The site's located at 2303 Southwest College, approximately at the northwest corner of 24th Street and College Avenue. Comprises 8.2 acres. They have proposed a mix of uses that will allow social service organizations, grant-funded organizations, mostly not-for-profit, all not exceeding the typical impact of a public I included the current mix of tenants within here, so you could just have an idea of what types of uses will be allowed within the facility with approval of the rezoning. Staff has written the ordinance in a way to not preclude them from trading out tenants and using the building for other tenants, as long as they fit within the overall broad parameters. And I will read that condition here, just so you're aware, that they're not limited to these tenants here. They can trade them out. R1 land uses will be permitted. In addition to R1 land uses, administrative offices and operations for nonprofit social service organizations, having a low impact that does not exceed the impact typical for public or private schools. Uses may include, but are not limited to daycare type 2, indoor farmer's market, recycling education, healthcare assistance, religious assembly and related uses, professional training, therapy and counseling, and indoor and outdoor recreation. An outdoor community garden may also be permitted. Going on to the next slide. The property is located within the Valley Park neighborhood, which is a traditional neighborhood design. By that, I mean the school lies at the center of the neighborhood, with residences facing the school, fronting upon the school. Southwest 21st Street acts as a transition into this neighborhood and is the north boundary of the Valley Park neighborhood. The surrounding zoning is to the east, west, and south is predominantly single-family, with multifamily on the north side, just adjacent to the university campus. The next slide represents the existing school building and grounds. Placed it in here to show you, the building itself on the exterior will not change with approval of the rezoning. Surrounding land uses to the west, south, and east are single-family, with the Mountain Vernon Apartments to the north. The Valley Park neighborhood plan was adopted by the council in 2021, designated this property for institutional land uses. The proposal is consistent, as it retrofits the existing civic space and promotes guiding principles of the plan to repurpose the school. This example floor plan is in here, just to show you, they're not making significant changes to preclude the building from being used as a school in the future. That was a consideration of the school district, that they'd be able to use the school in the future if it needs change. Staff did -- the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on August 1. Seven attendees attended the meeting, and no one did have any outright opposition to the zone change. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report. This is a PUD without a master plan, so all the conditions will be approved by the governing ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Driver by the commissioners? Commissioner Cow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annie, just one quick question about parking, but I wanted to mention, I think this is an extremely good staff report, very, very thorough, so thank you for that. The parking under the code would be 85 stalls, and it's going to end up with 30 here, if this is approved as submitted. And I'm fine with that. I think 30 is great, although I'd like to know how many of those have to be handicapped. But I wanted to understand the process we went through to get from 85 to 30, and just correct me if I'm wrong here. You had the 25% staff reduction to get it down to 64, but then we went 64 to 30, and that's by virtue of us being a PUD. Is that?
That's by virtue of being a PUD, and there is an area to the west of the building where they could use, they could stripe some of that played yard for parking, if it ever comes up in the future. We don't, I've been out there several times, and they do not appear to have a parking problem. They are already using the building for this use.
Okay. Thank you. That's good.
Commissioner Brooks.
Thank you. So I just had a question. I was curious. I understand USD 501 still owns the property. And then, kind of reading through the list of uses, my assumption was that education was not included in the list of uses. And then, you'd mentioned that 501 would like to keep the floor plan available for a future school, if they need to, and so I didn't know if.
Commissioner Brooks, could you get the mic closer?
Is that better? No? Can you hear me? I don't hear anything.
Public and private schools are already allowed in R1 zoning, so there was no need to put them, to allow it specifically as part of the PUD.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nager.
My understanding is that in 2019 or 2020, Valley Park had some pretty severe flooding. This, with it not having to expand parking, is there any worry about impacts on flooding?
Well, they're not making any changes exteriorly to the building to make it different from what, they're not increasing impervious surface, they're not making any changes, building additions, to make it any different from what the existing use, or how it's impacting it today, what's being impacted today.
All right. Would it be fair to say that, like, between they're already using it for this purpose and the 30-some parking spots are working fine, that not wanting to have any issue with exacerbating flooding problems, that in this case, the owner of the property is better suited to know how many parking spots is well-suited to the property than a government mandate of a certain number of parking spots?
Our thought was that they could accommodate the additional parking, if it comes up in the future, by just striping some of the existing paved parking to the west of the building, which previously was likely being used as a playground, basketball courts, and play area for kids, when it was in operation as a school.
That makes sense. But that'd be something that that owner and operator of the property probably knows better than we at the city would know.
Any, since this whole property is within the floodway, any change to the building, I mean, any additions onto the building, any increase to impervious surface, is going to require a no-rise certificate from the Division of Water Resources. Means they have to show there's no net impact downstream.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is there a representative for the applicant here tonight? Please state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mary Thomas with Community Resources Council. Happy to answer your questions. This is building number three for us. You may be aware or remember that we started this concept in 2011 at Avondale East and the High Crest West neighborhood, where we sought and received a CUP at that time for multi-use in an existing elementary school. We have not changed the footprint of that school. All this time, 501 continues to own the school, and we have a master lease to the school, with the understanding that we would sublet to not-for-profit agencies only. This is to help not-for-profits get a foothold, or to expand, to maybe create a pilot project where they need a brick-and-mortar opportunity. We stay full, and I don't have any tenants leave. So this is building number three for us. I was a little surprised, quite frankly, but as I was telling the chair, I have a hard time saying no, and within six months, we were full again. Not-for-profit is quite the thing in our community. The philanthropic heart is alive and well. I can testify to that. These folks are providing service right here in low-to-modern-income neighborhoods. A lot of people, particularly at High Crest West, are challenged, travel-challenged. So if they can fall out the back door and find resources or referrals, hand-to-hand referrals that they need, so that they're not wasting gas, favors, and bus money, they can get a lot more done for themselves. So that's, in essence, what we're doing here at Stout. There is an educational component to almost every of our tenants in all three of our buildings, because while they have such passion for what they do, they want to teach others what they do, whether it's recycle, whether it's working through therapies, whether it is gardening. Our garden at Lundgren is over 1,200 square feet for the third year. It's fantastic, with fruit trees and so on. So we have quite the mix. When you call this a mixed-use property, you couldn't get a better label for it. And at Stout, it is the same way. We're proud to be there, to support these not-for-profits. We just do the work behind the scenes. They're the ones that are on the front line, working with the clients directly. So I'll shut up, and I'll try again. Any questions I can answer for you?
Commissioner Cow.
Very, the 10 conditions that are set out in the conditional use permit, is the CRC comfortable with all 10 of those?
We have worked through those with staff, and we are quite comfortable with those. And staff has been very helpful through this process. I cannot thank them enough for their time and effort. It's been a learning process, so hopefully, I was schooled well, and they have helped me. Yes, we have no problems with what has been set out for us. And they did check with us with each one of those, so we had an opportunity to have a dialogue and make sure that CRC and board fully understood what was being asked of us. We're right on board.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Chair. And, Commission.
All right. Is there any public testimony regarding this case? Public testimony?
Any comments?
Regarding this case?
Come forward.
Come forward. To the mic. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I picked up the wrong glasses at home. You're a little fuzzy. Sorry for your looking at me. Excuse me. My name's Doug Mays. I own a house at 5053 Southwest 23rd Street, which is just like two doors away from this. My granddaughter lives there, and I expect we'll live there for some time. I don't think I necessarily speak for the other residents in the area, but, you know, we all wondered and worried, what is going to happen to Stout School when it emptied? And we were a little surprised when it happened, and we've been all waiting to see. And I think this is a good use for the property, I really do. There are some things that could be a concern, but are not now, that there's, what, eight acres there, seven and a half, something like that? And even with the parking, there's probably going to be five acres or so that's left to the east, sorry, to the west and to the north. And I'm concerned with what might happen with that down the road, that it would still remain an area that would not have any kind of industrial, which I think is completely off-road. I spent seven years on the Planning Commission, so I do know a little bit about this. Just so that we stick to what is being proposed here. And one last thing, any concerns about flooding, I think, they've done a lot underneath the bridge on Burlingame last summer. And I think there's, there are plans to do some things downstream that would prevent the flooding that we had, what was it, 20 years ago? And then, we had a pretty good downpour about three years ago that got real close to Stout, but did not get all the way. So those are my concerns, and otherwise, I think it's a great thing.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Let's.
Madam Chair, would you like me to respond to that question?
Yes.
I have a little bit of knowledge, only because with the third building, you know, it's hard to romance a not-for-profit to come alongside you if you can't give them a brick-and-mortar for any length of time that they can depend on. How are they going to grow their business and put their roots down if any moment, 501 may sneak on back and decide that the registration is up and they need to come back to the building? I have been assured several times by the deputy superintendent, every time we go through one of these buildings and through this discussion, they love these buildings. All three that we're in were built in 5052 and 53, respectively. While they are solid, built with good materials and by artisans, they'll take an F2 tornado every day. Unfortunately, enrollment is such, over the decades, the decline that they have to consolidate their expenses in order to manage their budget better. So that consolidation happens in those schools where they've dropped to a half, to two-thirds to a half of what the enrollment was in its day. But they've also assured me, they will always want to own that real estate and those buildings, because those acres that go with each one of these buildings assures them a future opportunity if things completely change up. If they have to move from a building, if they have a fire in a building, they have blank acreage contiguous in the city limits they would never find again, where they could build a second site if they needed to, not displacing us or our tenants, but preserving the opportunity if they ever needed it. They have no intention of selling that acreage, if that's helpful.
All right, thank you. Is there any more discussion? I'm going to close the public hearing now. And is there any discussion by commissioners on this case? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Based on the findings and analysis in the staff report, I move to recommend to the governing body approval of the zoning from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to PUD Plan Unit Development, with an R1 use to accommodate R1 uses, plus the addition of administrative offices and operations for nonprofit social and service organizations, including but not limited to the uses as requested and described in the statement of operations.
Can I get a second?
A second, a motion.
All right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Amanda, will you take the vote?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Chilobin?
Aye.
Ms. Hannan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next case, Z2401 by Six Zero Incorporated. Paul?
Thank you. This is zoning case Z2401, Northwest Lower Silver Lake Road by Six Zero Inc. The proposal by the applicant is to rezone the parcel shown here, from R1 Single Family to I1 Light Industrial. The parcel in question is on Northwest Lower Silver Lake Road, about 1,000 feet east of Northwest Button Road, just under four acres, currently vacant, and there is no specific development proposed at this time for the parcel. This here just shows a slightly broader context. It's about a mile and a half to the east of Highway 75. The existing zoning in character, primarily zoned R1 Single Family in the surroundings. The property adjacent to the east is zoned I1 Light Industrial, that is also owned by Six Zero Inc. And to the south, that PUD Plan Unit Development, that is an I1 use group, that's the North Topeka Wastewater Plant. With the residentially-zoned areas, I would say it's been partially developed. There's some single-family housing on there, some undeveloped parcels, some being used for agriculture. Here is a view, looking south from Silver Lake Road at the proposed parcel. That fence that's kind of running north-south, that's the property line. On the left side of the image, that's the existing light industrial use, and the right side of the image would be where the rezoning would be. And then, this is the adjacent parcel here with the residence, that's kind of the cut-out of the flag lot on Silver Lake Road. The Future Land Use Plan in Land Use and Growth Management Plan 2040 identifies this region as proposed future industrial. There's been very limited residential development activity in this region. This parcel has been vacant since 1969, when it was annexed, and the area as a whole is kind of transitioning towards a more industrial use. It is an industrial zoning, right next to a residential zoning. Typically, we prefer to have some kind of zoning buffer in between, commercial or open space. In this case, we don't have that. There is no specific development proposed at this time, so it's difficult to say what the impacts might be on the surrounding residential uses. There is that pretty apparent, pretty apparent limited residential demand in the area. We don't expect a lot of future residential activity in this region that this industrial development might impact. And any industrial development that did happen would be subject to our site plan review process, so that would be our building design standards, landscaping, you know, screening, residential buffers, as well as any stormwater and traffic impacts. It would have to meet our standards for that. In light of all that, staff is recommending approval of the reclassification from R1 Single Family to I1 Light Industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the commissioners? All right, seeing none. Is there a representative of the applicant in the audience? Is there a representative of the applicant in the audience?
My name is Walker Bassett, representing Six Zero. I don't really have anything more to add. The planning staff did a great job in reviewing and explaining. You know, this property is currently zoned R1 and it has been for some time, as we can see. We don't know anything that's been developed on before. The same owner, Six Zero, on the property that's contiguous to it, that's already zoned I1. And reszoning this I1 gives them a better opportunity to be able to develop this or give it to some, lease it to some business, sell it in some fashion, get this land moving and developed. So that's about all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Is there any comment from the audience, from the public? All right, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing now. Is there any discussion among the commissioners? You guys are so quiet tonight. Yes, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had this issue come up before where we have I1 zoning right adjacent to existing residential and no, no building setback requirement at all for the I1. You can build right up to the property line, correct, Mike?
When I1 is abutting residential zoning, there is a building setback. It has to be the same as the setback that's required for the R1 zoning. So there is a building setback.
Okay, is that a recent change to the code?
No, that's how it's been. There isn't much of, there's a, it's not a lot of a setback. It's a side yard setback, honestly.
So what is the foot, what is the setback?
So.
Terms of feet?
I think I know what it is, but I'm going to look at this.
Okay.
I want to be sure I gave you the right answer.
And I see what you're talking about. It is in the staff report of the dimensional standards there.
Yep.
So the existing code does provide some, some buffering, some protection for the existing residential?
Yes. Okay, so for a side yard where it abuts residential, so for example, on the west side, that's R1, the side yard setback for a building is seven feet. So it's a seven-foot building setback.
It's what is?
It's a seven-foot building setback. Yes.
Well, I guess then that triggers my memory. I think when this come up, had come up before, I was mistaken about what I said earlier, but it's whether or not the seven-foot is sufficient. At some point, hopefully, we'd have some discussion about whether or not that can be a function of the particular project or if the, or the size of the property or what have you. Seven feet ain't much.
I don't disagree with that statement.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
All right, is there any other discussion by commissioners? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Madam Chair. I would move adoption of the staff findings and staff report and recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right. Amanda, will you please take the roll call vote?
Mr. Dean.
Aye.
Ms. Herron.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Mr. Cow.
Aye.
Mr. Nager.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Mr. Tebabin.
Aye.
Ms. Hanen.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next case is ACZR2402, text amendments proposed by the Planning Commission Incentives Committee. I believe that's you, Dan.
Madam Chair, my call will handle this case.
Mike.
All right, thank you. All right, so last, at the last meeting, the Planning Commission discussed this item. We presented this slide presentation. It's been reduced a little bit, fewer slides, but we did have a discussion about this. So some of this will be familiar. So going back to the citywide housing market study and strategy, which was adopted in 2020, some of the strategies of the study are to support development of a diverse mix of housing types and to expand production of affordable housing. There are other strategies in the study, but those are the ones that are most relevant to what we're discussing today. One of the key findings in there is, is pretty dramatic. Topeka is projected to need 4,000 additional units of affordable housing over the next 20 years, which is a lot. So if you look at this slide, this is what has happened over the past four years. And through 2023, from 21 to 2023, we have issued permits for 592 housing units. So most of those have been built. Usually, people don't get a permit unless they actually build something. But that's the number of permits. It is the number of permits. Through 2024, that number is 648. So in looking, looking at the range or the proportion of that, of those units that are affordable, considered affordable, 60% or less affordable to, it's 60% of area median income. It's about 16%. So it's, it's a small part of that. Not a lot of units. It's not getting us to 4,000, certainly. There are a lot of possible reasons why housing production isn't very high. But some of that is due to costs and how costs relate to revenues from, from the housing unit, either rental or for sale. So what the committee discussed was reducing minimum lot sizes, minimum lot widths. We addressed the minimum required setbacks. In fact, one of the, the meetings that the committee held was with people in the housing, construction industry, housing advocates. And some of the feedback from that meeting was, hey, what about setbacks? Because we hadn't actually proposed reducing setbacks. So when we, when staff looks at potential changes to code requirements, to zoning regulations, we do look at, at different communities. And we tend to look at communities in, in eastern Kansas. And sometimes we go outside of Kansas. And that's what we did in this case. So what you'll find here is that if you look at the Kansas cities, the dimensional standards in Topeka are pretty similar to the other communities. If you look at setbacks for the R1 district, our current standards, the setbacks are a little bit more onerous. They're a little bigger, the minimum required setbacks for the R1 district. The R1 district, just as a reminder, is the most prominent of our single-family residential districts. The R2 district is, is mostly based on or mostly applies to central Topeka and areas of southeast Topeka, where those were originally plowed in smaller lots. A lot of that's pre-World War II development, just to give you some idea. So one thing we did do is we looked outside of Kansas, Rochester, Minnesota, which is actually almost identical in size to Topeka, at least the annexed part of Topeka and annexed part of Rochester, Minnesota, and Sacramento. And those setback requirements are a lot less restrictive, a lot more permissive than they are in Topeka. So what is being proposed is reducing the, the minimum lot size in the R1 district from, from 6,500 to 5,500. I'm having a hard time reading the screen, so I'm going to put my staff report here. Okay. Reducing the minimum lot size in the R2 district from 5,000 to 4,000, and then reducing the sizes in the other districts as well, the medium-density residential districts and multifamily residential districts. It's also proposed that the minimum lot width in the R1 district be reduced from 60 to 50 feet and the minimum lot width in R2 be reduced from 40 to 35 feet. And there are some other reductions as well. And I'll get into the density in a little bit, a little bit later in a later slide. So one thing that that's based on, a big part of affordability or cost, building cost, is lot size. It's lot width. The wider a lot is required or the, the more lot frontage you have, it means longer water lines, longer sewer mains, that type of thing. So it does affect cost. Just to give you some framework for looking at this, so this is a fairly typical, more recent, when I say more recent, like after 1960s, single-family residential development, 65-foot wide lots, 150-foot deep. And this meets the requirements in the R1 district. So this is the type of housing you can, you can expect under these types of requirements. These two houses, they look like they're almost identical. They're not the same house, but they're very similar. But they're, the point is, is these are fairly large homes and they fit on a 65-foot wide lot. Three-car garages, you know, over 2,000 square foot on, on the same, on one floor. So this is a, an area that's, it's in, it's in, it's very close to the other subdivision. That says Colby Creek. It's actually Colley Creek. That's a typo. Colley Creek Number Eight. So this subdivision has smaller lots, 50-foot wide, 110 feet deep. By the way, 110 feet is the minimum depth required in our subdivision code, not in Arizona code, but in our subdivision code. So these are smaller lots, 50-foot wide, 110 feet deep. So this was done as a PUD because it couldn't be done under R1 standards. So, so there were variances to dimensional requirements because it was done under a PUD. So this is the kind of housing you can expect in a place like this. This is a two-car garage, 1,500 square foot living space. And it fits on these, on these lots. I just have this up here just to show that there are floor plans out there that are smaller, smaller homes, smaller or narrower floor plans. This is a 30-foot wide home. And there are, there are these out there that are available. Okay, so density. What's being proposed here is to, in the M1 district, increase the maximum density, that's dwelling units per acre, from six to 15 units per acre. In the M1A district, from 10 to 15 units per acre. In the M2 district, from 15 to 25 units per acre. And in the M3 district, from 30 to 40 units per acre. That's maximum, has a maximum density. So just to give you some kind of background, if you're not aware of this, M2 zoning is probably the most common zoning for medium-density apartments, what most people would consider garden apartments. Two, two to three stories, parking lots, some open space. So I have some slides here that show you existing examples in Topeka of density and form that'll give you some idea of what this kind of density looks like. So these were, these apartments, these next two slides, the apartments were built, I think, in the 50s, maybe 40s, 50s, maybe 60s even. So this one's at 17th and High, zoned M2, about a half an acre, two buildings, 10 units, 10 off-street parking spaces. It's 21 units per acre. So under the current standards, this is non-conforming. This is not conformed to density standards right now. But I, I think the, one of the points here is, it's not really a large building. It kind of fits in the neighborhood, the surrounding single-family residential neighborhood. So this is another one. This is actually a little denser. This is at 17th and Webster, zoned M2, six tenths of an acre, 21 units, two stories with basement units, 18 parking spaces. So it's actually less than one parking stall per unit, which can really affect how dense you can build on a site. And this is 34 units per acre. So this is a kind of a mid-rise, high-rise type of apartment building. This is in downtown. This has parking in a garage. So some of the parking is not just surface parking, which frees up a lot of, of the land for building the building. So this one is 71 units per acre. 102-unit building, 71 units per acre. So in the D1 Downtown District, there's no density standard, per se. It's, it's what you can build under the height standards and, and you can build to the sidewalk. There's also no parking requirement. There's no off-street parking that's required in downtown, in the D1 district, excuse me. So the other thing the Incentives Committee discussed and recommends is having a density bonus that might do something to incentivize affordable housing. So this would be a footnote to the Density Dimensional Standards Residential Districts. And it reads, "Density increase of 40% for a minimum of 30% of the units being affordable housing applicable in the M2 and M3 zoning districts." Affordable for this requirement means affordable to households with an income of 60% of area median income or less. So as an example, if you have a project on a one-acre site that's zoned M2, the project is allowed at a density of 25 units per acre, 25 units in this case because it's a one-acre site. With the bonus, the developer will be allowed to build to a density of 35 units per acre, an additional 10 units if rent is kept to a level affordable to households with an income of 60% or less of AMI for at least 30% of the units. That's 11 of the 35 units. And that's the end of the slideshow. Any questions, comments? I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Seeing none. And this is a public hearing, so I'm asking if there's any comment from the public? All right, seeing none. I will close the public hearing now. Is there any discussion amongst commissioners? Commissioner Cobb.
Madam Chair, all I wanted to say was that Mike's explanation, running through those changes, is very complete. You know, the committee worked closely with the staff in coming up with these. So, you know, we're, we think it is a good effort, a beginning effort to maybe deregulate, careful about that term, but it is deregulation to, to a degree. So I urge the commission to, to approve the proposed amendments.
I agree. Thank you for the, both of you guys working together so well, staff and the committee. Is there any other further, Commissioner Brooks?
I just have a question on the process. So are we going to vote to approve what's been provided tonight? And then if that's what we're doing, then what's the process after that? It goes to city council or what does that look like?
So the recommendation, there's a, there's a motion that's drafted in the memo that's included in the packet. The recommendation is that you move to forward a recommendation of approval to the governing body. And the governing body would, would make the decision. And they do not hold a public hearing. They, they, they act on the record that you provide.
Commissioner Nager?
Back to the substance very briefly. The only thing I would add is that if, let's say I'm a, want to build a new home and I want it to have a lot width of a couple hundred feet and want to make sure I'm 25, 30 feet from each of my neighbors, want to have pretty much no, the vast majority of it be yard and not actually the building, this does not stop you from doing that. That is still fully permissible. It's just saying that the person building the home is able to do what fits that specific scenario the best.
Correct. I agree. I agree. Yes.
Can I add something? So, there are a lot of existing lots out there, we call them lots of record. So, the dimensional standards for lots, lot size, minimum width, that's for new lots that are being created, it doesn't apply to existing lots of record. If someone has a lot, it doesn't meet all those standards, as long as it's, you know, it's platted a long time ago, or it was created a long time ago, they have a lot of record, they can get a building permit for that lot. I think one thing that will be able to be applied pretty, you know, once it's adopted, is the minimum setback requirements. So those, I think people really feel the impact of that on individual projects, potentially.
Right. So you're not gonna come after anyone who's been around for ages and say, "You need to change your lot size?"
That is correct.
Okay.
We will not do that.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Is there anyone, any other discussion by commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I move to recommend approval of ACZR 24-02, an amendment to zoning regulations regarding density and dimensional standards for residential zoning districts to support housing development.
All right.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Amanda, will you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Mr. Tobavin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
And Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, looking at discussion items, the first one is duplexes in single-family zoning.
Thank you, I'll be presenting these to you. So, the committee met last week, and discussed this item. These are slides that were, were presented to them, so you're gonna get the entire slideshow, which, I'll go through some of it quickly, so, but this was discussed. So one of the things that was mentioned earlier was not only duplexes, but also triplexes and fourplexes, so this potentially could apply to those as well, just so you know. So, what, what is being discussed is changing the way that's, this is treated in the land use table, in the, in the land use matrix. Right now, duplexes in R1 and R2 districts are prohibited, so if someone wants to build a duplex, they have to rezone the property. So one of the issues that can come up is, let's say someone has a vacant lot in the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood. If you have to rezone a lot, you're gonna have one lot in a sea of R1 and R2, and sometimes that's not, that's problematic, from a zoning point of view, for the most part, to have just a postage stamp of, of say, M1 or M2, totally surrounded by R1 and R2 on the zoning map. So a conditional use permit would address that concern. Okay, so, these are some slides that just show you kind of different possibilities, different candidates, just to give you an idea of potentially where, if these are permitted, where we could see proposals for duplexes, or triplexes, and, or fourplexes in one lot. So this is an example of a vacant lot in a conventional subdivision, this is a subdivision in West Topeka. You know, this is platted, say, 15 years ago, roughly, hasn't been completely built out, but there are a number of vacant lots. This is a vacant lot in a central Topeka subdivision, the slide's kind of messed up, so sorry about that. But, there are vacant lots in central Topeka, that have some potential for this. So this is another one, this is a corner lot in a conventional subdivision, you know, some, a subdivision that was developed within the past, these are, actually, these are two examples, within the past couple decades. This is a, an example of a vacant lot with alley access, this was Zoned R1, this is near Potwin, where the, there are these narrow lots, but they're pretty deep, so this one in particular is 10,000 square feet, with alley access. Here are some examples of large vacant lots, this one's in North Topeka, and as you can see, these are one, one acre or more in size, but there are a number of these around. They tend to be in North Topeka and Southeast Topeka, is where these are most common. Here's another possibility, these are a neighborhood with a lot of vacant lots, underdeveloped neighborhood, these lots probably had houses on it one time, the infrastructure's all in place, so these lots range in size from two tenths of an acre to a half acre in size. And these are Zoned R2 and in Southeast Topeka. So another candidate for this is conversion of an existing single-family home into a duplex, or one that has maybe been kind of, maybe not legal, operating like this, and there are those that are out there, that could be converted to a duplex. So, these photos are from Holiday Park and Central Park, and actually, one of these, at least one of those houses on the right, does have two or more units in it, you can see the mailboxes, so that's, that's been done. So a lot of these older neighborhoods, the cities adopted neighborhood plans, and one way to implement those neighborhood plans was, were to downzone them, because they were, they were zoned for duplexes, or even multifamily in some cases, and something that came out of that plan was a consensus to downzone, to help support redevelopment of the neighborhood, or revitalization of the neighborhood. Some other candidates, the two on the left are in Ward Me, the one in the middle's actually, I think, a duplex already, and then, the one on the right is just an example of a newer area, this one's on Gage, this one has, looks like a pretty good-sized driveway with parking, so there's some potential. Just wanted to give you an idea of what we're talking about. There's a variety of situations that, where this could be possible, if the, if the zoning was changed, if the regulations were changed. So why is allowing duplexes in single-family districts in the public interest? Kind of going back to the, the citywide housing strategy, it helps to address a housing need. It's an incremental approach with relatively low impact to neighborhoods, because it's, we're not talking about entire subdivisions of duplexes, we're talking about allowing someone to apply for a conditional use permit on a single lot. Allows current owner an additional revenue source to maintain and sustain the existing residence, so that would allow someone, maybe they have a house, that's a big house, they wanna keep it up, they wanna, they wanna put some money into it. Adding a unit would give them some rent, rent income that could be used for that purpose. It's also a way to encourage redevelopment, better utilization of the existing infrastructure, so infill development. Okay. So, some potential compatibility issues with duplexes in single-family residential neighborhoods. And I say potential, I think of sub-potential. Incompatible architecture, building inconsistent with neighborhood character, concentration of duplexes, and potential to change the predominant land use and character of the neighborhood, excessive driveways and parking areas, need for additional driveway access on arturals and collectors, which could create traffic safety concerns, inadequate parking, or perceptions of inadequate parking, potential to create congestion on streets, concerns about rental units in predominantly owner-occupied neighborhoods, concerns about degradation of property values. So these are issues that are likely to arise as, as things get on your agenda, and, say, neighboring property owners have concerns about what's being proposed, these are the potential issues. So, in thinking through this, there are a few different approaches. So one is just to, say, require a conditional use permit in the R1, R2, and R3 districts. There are no guidelines, or no guardrails, just, if someone wants to apply for a conditional use permit, they're gonna have to go through the process, you know, what's, the limitations are really gonna be the, the golden factors, and your analysis of the case, but no specific guidelines or, or standards. The second approach is only allow conditional use permit applications if it meets certain thresholds, or under certain conditions. So let's say that we would allow a conditional use permit only if the site is a half acre or more, that would be an example. Only if it's a corner lot, or it has to use similar architecture to what's around it. So you could have standards like that, or criteria. So, one thing that was discussed by the committee is, you know, maybe have some language, some guidelines, that kind of explain the intent of what's allowed, just to provide some guidance, but not necessarily specific standards, but, but just some kind of way to guide someone who's applying. So, I think that what the committee favored, as we discussed this, was not number two, not the, not the second approach, but either the first approach, or maybe the third approach. And they can speak to that, I don't wanna speak for them necessarily. I won't go through all these, but I'll just give you a minute to look at this. So if you're gonna have guidelines, or criteria, or standards, these are some of the, the types of, of standards or guidelines you could have. And, some of this was from our research of other cities, and how they've handled duplexes in single-family residential districts, and these are some of the types of standards you can expect in those places. So a lot of this has to do with compatibility, size of the, the size of the lot, the number of driveways, the building architecture, the, the size of the building, screening, and traffic. And, that concludes the slides. So, if you have any questions or comments, or just, it's a good time for discussion.
Yeah, it's a good time for discussion. First, I'll look and see if there's any quick burning questions to ask of Mike, because I have one. If not, from the other commissioners. And it might be just, I'm hypersensitive to historic preservation, and some of the neighborhoods you pointed out were neighborhoods that might be potentially, or are historic districts. How does that overlay work with this proposal?
So if, if, let's say someone wanted to do a project in Holiday Park, for example, Holiday Park's a historic district, they're still subject to the CLGR, the historic review, and this doesn't change that, but it does, I think if someone was doing a duplex, I think that the Landmarks Commission would not necessarily have the authority to say, "You can't do a duplex," but they could control how it's built, how it's designed, and ensure that it's, that it's, it meets those requirements.
I'm not sure we have that authority, but maybe that's something we can discuss at the local Landmarks Commission as well, how this would, I, I'm thinking about design review, and how this would work with design review. I don't think this would work, but that's just my limited knowledge right now. I do wanna hear from members of the committee who worked on this, to give us some explanation and background.
Yeah, Madam Chair, yeah, the historic areas, that was a topic of some discussion, and certainly they'll be sensitive to that, and recognize the, what needs to be done there. And I appreciate the full Planning Commission taking the time, and having this on the agenda tonight, to get briefed on where we are on this, but just a couple of real simple points here, the objective that we have, and have had since day one, is to increase the number of housing units in Topeka, okay, and with a special emphasis upon affordable housing. But, any housing that comes in is an improvement to the situation we are now. We would, what we wanted to hear from the, if we had any input, or any comments from members of the, of the full Planning Commission tonight, we welcome those, but the objective here is to go forward and vet these ideas with housing advocates, developers, and I think all the approaches that Mike mentioned, that were on the screen, are, are in play, you know, whether it's a, a more rigid approach, or a more open-ended one, you know, it's, I, I have my views about that, and I'll inflict those on you. You know, the idea here is to, is to open the door, opportunities to have the marketplace work, and I think we need to be careful about opening the door, and then closing it again, or, or moving in that direction, I think that would be unfortunate. And I would emphasize, I, I think the, the discussion we've had so far is really about duplexes, and then possibly triplexes and fourplexes, as conditional uses only, not as permitted uses. And I, I think that's important to bear in mind, because when you're going through the conditional use permit process, you're gonna have a public hearing, and if folks in the neighborhood identify issues, then those can be dealt with by, by imposing conditions upon the, upon the duplex, or triplex, or fourplex, whatever it is. So, you know, if we were talking about having multifamily in single-family neighborhoods as permitted uses, I think that certainly would, there would be some need for, have some standards to allay concerns that folks might have with that, but we've, we've been to this point talking about conditional uses. I would mention that, even though Mike has been, I think Mike mentioned this earlier, that the screen is talking about duplexes, we, the committee has been talking about triplexes and fourplexes as well. I would anticipate, if up to the committee, but I would anticipate that we would vet those ideas as well, and see what kind of response we get from the development community, and what response from the housing advocates. But certainly duplexes are the, are the, it's the low-hanging fruit, you know. And not to repeat what Mike says, but I, I wanna make one comparison to the work we did recently with the accessory dwelling units. And I think it's a really important point for us, and hopefully for the governing body as well. When you, when you allow an accessory dwelling unit to go in, in all likelihood, you are creating a revenue stream for the property owner, that will help the property, if the property owner is present, owner occupied, it might help that person stay in place, where they might otherwise not be able to economically as, as they age, but it also provides revenue to maintain the property. Well, same story with duplexes, you know, there are many locations around town where it is, on infill development in particular, where it just doesn't make economic sense to, to put a single-family house in. The revenue's not there, if you're building it as a rental, but if you're, you've put, if you can fit a duplex in, you've got a revenue stream for new construction in, in an infill. And same story goes for the renovation, Mike had a number of examples of structures that, you know, could be modified, converted from single-family to duplex, you're again creating a revenue stream that will benefit not just the property owner, but the property, you'll be able to, to maintain and improve that, that property with that revenue. I know that's all in theory, but, but it's been demonstrated to work in, in communities around the country, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the committee who has any comment?
We, we do wanna know if there are any concerns or questions about going forward to the...
Commissioner Heron had a comment.
No, I just wanted to make a quick comment about even just the conversation swing from, you know, looking at duplexes, but also looking at triplexes and fourplexes, kind of goes back to a comment they made earlier, that, you know, we're short about four... back to a comment they made earlier that, you know, we're short about 4,000 housing stock. And initially, when the subject of ADUs came up, it was in regards to missing middle housing. And so what we're wanting to create is more housing diversity, you know, housing options. And we think that this is a great tool. And there's a lot of economic factors that I think, a lot of the concerns that could come up with people, you know, in, you know, neighbors, constituents, a lot of it, you know, just by presenting facts of what happens in the different neighborhoods, I think will ease a lot of those concerns. And then, so I just wanted to add that tidbit. I'm really excited that we're having this conversation and that it's happening as quickly as it is after ADUs, because I think it's something that's really needed. And I think it'll have a big impact on the city of Topeka economically.
Thank you. So what are our next steps here?
So, Madam Chair, our next step really is to talk to stakeholders, similar to what we did with the accessory dwelling unit changes. We met with neighborhoods, let them know what was going on, and got their feedback. And other stakeholders as well. And then, you know, there are likely to be issues, and responding to those issues, and then, then coming back to you and reporting back to you. And I think there'd be a discussion, probably a discussion, and then, depending on where that goes, follow that up with potentially a public hearing for a change in the code.
What is your timeline? When are you going to get started?
Just knowing how it is to get on agendas and get into meetings, we probably won't come back to you till, you know, early next year, so January, probably just, I already know for sure there's a neighborhood that's not meeting till, you know, November that we'd like to talk to, so.
Is that acceptable to the committee, or?
Yeah, we really haven't had conversations with staff about the timing for the next meeting, but I think we want to move forward as quickly as we can before we get in the midst of the holidays, so.
Okay.
And I think a meeting with, I would hope a meeting with the developers, you know, could be, I think would be the easiest thing to put together, and hopefully that can be done, what, tomorrow, Dan?
That's not a problem.
Or thereabouts, yeah.
Okay. So, well, thank you for that report, and think, oh, nope, yes.
I have just a question, and it may be a really dumb question, but I see you have the CUP requirement for the duplex. And I'm just, I'm just asking if, is there a way to set it up where you don't have to go through the conditional use permit for duplex? Perhaps it's only, excuse me, required for maybe a triplex or a fourplex or whatever. And if you could build it in such a way, again, the goal is to take away the red tape and make it easier to do these. I agree completely with, it needs to fit in architecturally, it needs to make sense and all those things. But if I'm, if I'm wanting to infill, and I see there's a lot of red tape to get there, it may deter me from even going through that process. But if I could just go through a normal permitting process, it may encourage that a little more. Just a question.
Well, I, you know, that's, that's a possibility to go that direction. I think that, you know, one thing we kind of have a sense of, when I say we staff, I don't necessarily speak for the Senate's committee or the committee, but we would anticipate there'd be a lot of opposition to that. And if that was the case, and Commissioner Calp mentioned it earlier, with the ADUs, we established a lot of standards. There were a lot of standards associated with that. So that would be something that would probably be an essential part of doing it that way. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
It's a great answer, Mike.
Okay.
All right. So really, this is not the final answer to anything? It's just that we're starting to lay the options on the table and start that community discussion that we need to make some concrete recommendations? Is that what I'm understanding here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. If there's, did you, okay. With that in mind, it's a nice segue into the Planning Commission Incentives Committee turning into the Special Committee for Housing. And we talked about this last meeting, and we've got some recommended language for the bylaws. And were you able to look into, I'm looking at you, Matthew, were you able to look into the bylaws and how we amend them to create, to create the committee?
Yeah, Rhiannon had talked about it. I think she was going to look a little bit further than I, so she has a little bit more information than me.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, it can be done. We can do that. However, just drafting the, do you want to go through the language that you're recommending here? I think everything that you're talking about is something that we can administratively work on and would be a quick change.
Okay. Well, I'm not gonna, I'm, even though I know you just got this tonight, I'm not going to go through it point by point, but I will take some time, let you take some time to read it over and see if you have any questions related to it. And also, I will ask Commissioner Calp to explain it a little bit, but let everyone All right. I don't see anyone else scratching or reading, so I'm going to go ahead and ask Commissioner Calp to explain the process the committee went through to develop this.
And just to start off, under the bylaws, amending the bylaws, if this were to be an amendment to the bylaws, then it needs to be an agenda item no earlier than the next meeting.
Okay.
And the bylaws provide a 30-day notice to the Planning Commission of any proposed bylaws. This might need tweaking a little bit to be in a bylaw form, but the idea was to, to give some formality, some, to the, to the, to the Special Committee. To be honest, it doesn't have to be done via the bylaws, but it gives more, let's say permanency, but more emphasis to it if it is part of the, provided for under the bylaws and says the, there shall be a Special Committee. The chair would appoint the members of the planning, of the Special Committee, and consistent with other provisions of the bylaws, the chair could appoint not just members of the Planning Commission, but non-members as well to serve on the committee. And those members would serve at the pleasure of the chair, whoever he or she is at any point in time. The rest of what you have in front of you is just a listing of some of the major topic areas or subject that the Special Committee could take up. It would be a matter of, to me, the most important items on there is to serve as an ongoing monitor, if you will, or a part of this body, a portion of this body that would be, have its focus on the housing study that was done in 2020 and any implementation steps that are taken for that and any future housing study. So the Housing Committee would be reporting to the Planning Commission how that housing study has been implemented, what steps have been, are underway or should be underway. We would also have number two on there. I'll be quick about this. Just have an ongoing mission of taking a look at the city's development code and looking for opportunities to, to reduce regulation, reduce costs, encourage the construction of housing. Number four, I would welcome thoughts about this tonight or at the next meeting. I thought it would be helpful to have, the Special Committee would have an assigned role of being a liaison of sorts between the Planning Commission and some of the other entities that the city of Topeka has for housing and affordable housing in particular, the Land Bank, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and so on. It doesn't mean intruding, forcing our way into there, but it would require some communication and coordination, but it would be a matter of attending meetings and, again, reporting back to the Planning Commission on matters of interest to the, to the Planning Commission. The last one is just kind of a catch-all there, you know, work with staff and with an eye to improving the quality and quantity of housing in Topeka, which is no small task. And we appreciate the fact that the Planning Commission, and I've told you all this before, bragging, yeah, bragging, that have been on Planning Commission for a long time. And historically, the Planning Commission has not been deeply engaged in a topic like housing, you know, or economic development and all that. But, you know, there's, there is a serious problem in Topeka. And I think, and you all have your opinions too, but as to what the proper role of the Planning Commission is, I think it's an appropriate area for the Planning Commission to be more deeply engaged in.
I would agree with that. Is there any comment on this document as it stands?
The only comment I have, and I think this is something that we can flesh out as we kind of finalize this document, would just be item four, what the service would look like. And this is just from me being on the committee. I do contribute a lot of time already to numerous different housing initiatives and committees within the city. So I just would want clarification, just to make sure that that's a commitment that I can, you know, make if it's a requirement. So I just would want a little bit more clarification. I don't think it's anything we have to figure out tonight, but it's something that I think I would just want to have more conversations around and just get clarity about what the expectation would be.
Okay, duly noted. The only thing I was concerned with, maybe, not concerned even, clarification is a good word, is on item number three. Basing it on one sole document, I think it might need to be written a little bit more generically. So, because at some point, well, in my opinion, 2020 is already outdated, so I don't know how you would work that to make it, to stay relevant. But, and I also, in terms of the frequency of reporting to the Planning Commission, I wouldn't, I would almost say biannually, so it's something that you're looking at. But all of your reporting seems to be generic in nature. I would, I would probably want something a little more on a scheduled interval. But again, you guys might not agree with me, and so, about the frequency of the interval. So you said that you would look at getting it incorporated into the bylaws. I think it's very important that it's part of the bylaws. So we're looking back over here.
Can I ask a question?
A point of clarification. Is the intent to put all of this in the bylaws, or is this to be part of the committee's topics to understand what we're putting in the bylaws as creating the Special Committee? And the appointments, and how long it takes, and who's, you know, terms and all that? Is this more outside the bylaws, I hope, and not part of the bylaws? This is the committee's topics?
Well, Dan, it could go either way. Like I said, the argument to putting it all in the bylaws is that it locks in, so this is, this is the responsibility. The alternative is to have it, to have, just provide for the creation of the committee, serves at the pleasure of the, of the chair, and then maybe by resolution or some other form, the particular assignments, responsibilities of the, of the committee could be set out that way. But it can go either way.
You know, I'm just thinking, as, as things change, as, you know, something else gets created that the committee's interested in some group that's not in here, you know, so you got to amend the bylaws to include the Land Bank Phase Two or something, you know? So I, it just feels like this stuff could change, and to change that in the bylaws is a little bit more of a process than I think is necessary if you're just trying to have some topics for the committee to, to work on. That would be my thoughts about that.
So maybe a suggestion, I think that maybe we could, we can, definitely we don't have to workshop the language tonight all right here, but I think maybe we could put something along the lines of the committee working with staff to put together a proposed outline of work and expectations for that year, like a strategic plan almost. And that would be something that the committee could bring back and we could present at the first meeting of the year, and we would know for that year. That way, we're not, like you said, there's things that come up that we're updating or things that we've decided that we're going to be focusing on, on an annual basis. And so I just don't want it to get outdated too quickly. But I think it's important that we outline that, and we know the expectation, but maybe it's not included in the bylaws in that much detail.
Madam Chair, this, you know, this document here, I mean, you all are, most of you are seeing it for the first time tonight, but it did, it was the Incentive Committee reviewed it. And again, I, correct me if I'm wrong here, I mean, it could go either way in terms of the full document being, I don't want to get in the weeds here too much tonight, but it could be just a short statement saying there shall be a committee with, with duties assigned by the, assigned by the chair. That'd be fine, that'd be a simple thing. I don't want to see any, forgive me, a long-term process, you know, of generating a document that can be pretty simple. And because it's under the bylaws, to amend the bylaws, it needs 30 days' notice, it's not something we can, I mean, change. I don't want to, I don't want to be here on Christmas talking about this. The, well...
I think at this point, I think I can balance this out a little bit. Having worked on previous committees, normally, if we can at least get the committee into the bylaws with a pretty good scope of what that committee is supposed to do, this is getting very detail-oriented, and it would change very quickly. Like I said, when you identify a specific document, and that document falls out of favor or is no longer being used or is updated with another document, you really almost do literally have to update the bylaws. And I know that is not an onerous process, but it's still a process that's not necessarily necessary. So I would recommend that we get a really good working scope, which you do have, you've got started here. And there's some legal language that needs to be in there as well, that is not currently in this document. So working with staff and the attorney to make sure the legal language is there so this committee can function in its evergreen versus worrying about very specific actions. And I think those actions, as Rhiannon said, you can work with staff to determine, to some degree, what your work is going to be on a yearly basis. So that is my suggestion for moving forward with this project.
Madam Chair, could you do this, do what you're talking about and put it in more the, the bylaws form with a pretty simple two- or three-sentence mission statement, if you will, for the committee, and work it up with the Incentive Committee, and I'll work with Matt to make sure it's acceptable. That means we would not be able to adopt it at the October meeting, but could in November.
Correct.
I guess my question for you, it's still your intent, consistent with the last meeting, that the Incentive Committee stays alive and we continue, this, this doesn't prevent the Incentive Committee from going forward and vetting the duplex?
No, it will, it will continue to work until this is done. So, yeah, no, we're not stopping just to get this document created or this committee created in the bylaws.
Okay, we'll get something that the Incentive Committee likes, and we'll run it past Dan and Mike and Matt and...
Well, I don't know if Matt, if you have some template language that you can use to provide to the committee, so, to create the structure?
Yeah, I'm sure there's something out there that we could find. Yeah, I'm sure there's something out there that we could find and, and give you guys some structure to, to start with.
Okay.
I did want to make a quick comment, because I, I agree with, with, with the city's proposal. One of the things I just want to make sure we're really clear on is the intent and purpose of the committee. I've served on other committees before where the intent and the purpose wasn't really that clear in the bylaws, and every year the strategic plan changed, and we never really saw an effect of anything we implemented. So I just would want to be really careful of, just making sure we're very clear about what the focus is going to be so that we can actually see impact.
Correct. So I guess I'm, I'm thinking of, I'm on the local landmarks commission and we have a committee called the Design Review Committee. It is a very specific committee. We are there to review pending projects, period, and give advice, and it's written in our bylaws that way. So it can be very clear what's in your bylaws as to what you're supposed to be doing, instead of saying some, we're just going to make sure housing happens.
We're talking about carpet glats or some type of thing.
Exactly. So yes, I think if you've got some good structure, language to go by, and like I said, you've already got a pretty good idea of what you want to accomplish, I think it just has to be massaged into a form that's good for the actual document. All right. Any other, yes? I mean, you're reaching for your mic, I see you. Okay, all right. That's public comment, unless there's any other discussion. All right, so by next meeting, we might have some language and be able to vote by November? Is that what our timeline is kind of looking at?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. All right, public comment. You are teeing up.
All right, Commissioners. So since Mr. Tabobin is leaving the Planning Commission, he sits on the MTPO Policy Board, so Jim, do you want to explain quickly what that's all about?
Yes, the Metropolitan Topeka Planning Organization really oversees the, the long range and the, and the current planning for transportation in the region. It's the city of Topeka and somewhat of an area outside of the city limits, and it's not just roads, but it's all, it's transit, it's bicycles, it's pedestrians. The Policy Board kind of makes the, the judgment calls. There's a technical advisory committee that makes recommendations to the Policy Board. They meet once a month, and lately it's been a virtual meeting, many times it's in person, but Planning Commission has one member of the Policy Board. So as I'm rolling off the Planning Commission, we'll need to appoint somebody new.
Yes, Jim has been great in attending those meetings for the past year at least?
Probably not quite that long, but Cory took an active role in that for quite a while.
Right, right. Are there any Commissioners interested in that? We might have to do some coercion behind the scenes.
Madam Chair, I will say, potentially one of the new appointees, so there's two new appointees that are hopefully on the way, has some background in that, so it's possible that that person could fill that role, so we could possibly wait till the next meeting to sort that out, so people can think about it and.
Process it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's a great idea. Anything else?
That doesn't mean you can blame Jim and I for the road construction.
Okay. We can blame you for anything when you're not here.
True. My only other thing was that we, hopefully we'll have two more Commissioners being appointed soon, so.
Okay. I was in another meeting and a comment, words flew by about the UNESCO. Do you have any, any updates on that?
So the update is, we, we kind of paused a little bit. We, the timeline that we were working on originally wasn't really the actual timeline, so there's still some more time here. And so in the interim, what we're doing is an I/O Matt, a conversation, we have to decide what we can do from a zoning perspective to facilitate that project, i.e. create a buffer zone around the school. There's some, there's some tricky bits about state law and what we can, what we can do. So we're kind of working through that now to see, you know, how that, how that looks. But we'll, we'll be going back out to have another meeting, probably a couple more meetings, and try to get that going again. It doesn't really have to be done until the end of next year, so we're, you know, we'll, we'll get back at it with the public.
And you might remind the other Commissioners what that is about?
Sure. So the World Heritage Site, it's, it's a serial, so UNESCO World Heritage Site, they create these around, around the world, right? Trying to think of what's on, Stonehenge, probably.
Sure, sure.
And so this, so the Brown V. Board School is part of a serial nomination for U.S. Civil Rights, the peaceful U.S. Civil Rights era from the '60s up until the '70s. And so peaceful may not be the quite, the right term, but just how civil rights was addressed in these different communities. So in Topeka and some other communities, it was the education system that was, so that's Topeka's link to that era's civil rights. And so the school would be included along with some other sites around the country, particularly in the South. And in order to do that, you need to create a protection zone around the school, so protect it from, you know, incompatible, so building height, for instance, you don't want to block, you know, the views of the school that haven't been blocked before, you know, so that kind of thing, just making sure that you don't do things to harm the, the World Heritage Site. So we don't have a lot of great ways to do that here, but zoning, creating an overlay zone is a possibility for design and height and that kind of thing.
Is there anything else? Announcements?
I have something, not really an announcement, but I promised Commissioner Calp that I would give a quick update on the Kansas Housing Conference that myself and a few other staff members attended back in August. So it was really interesting, I think, I'll try to, I'll try to be brief and I can send out something that's written just to give you guys some links to some of the more interesting articles or authors that were there, people that were resources. But we had Quinn Cole, who is our management analyst that focuses more on our economic development incentive programs, and then Bryson Rizley, of course, neighborhood planner, and then Carrie Higgins, our Housing Services Division Director. So I think that was probably the perfect group to take, given the topics. The topics were all about incentivizing housing, affordable housing, homelessness, and addressing the unsheltered population. I think something that was great is they had sessions there, Dodge City was there talking about their use of the RHID program. They were, they were some of the first to get started with that when it was limited to populations of under 60 and rural. So when we developed RHID here, the legal team and I and finance worked really closely with Dodge City to understand their policies and how they put that into place, so it was really great to see, see them there presenting that, made me feel like we went to the right resource, which is always a good feeling. And then also similarly, Pittsburgh, Kansas was there talking about land banks, and Quinn Cole and our team did a lot of research and a lot of work with Pittsburgh. We even had a guest speaker come and join our first land bank board of trustees meeting to just talk through their processes, lessons learned, all those good things. And then really, I wasn't shocked to see this necessarily, but a lot of the focus was around unsheltered population, unique housing types, tiny homes, transitional housing, how to fit that into neighborhoods affordably, how to use sites that make sense. A lot of talk of conversion of decommissioned or once viable mobile home parks was a big portion of that. Lot of, lot of strategy of how that's happening. Johnson County is working on some stuff. If you, if you get to check out their Planning Commission meetings, I don't know that it's, it's gone as far as they would like it to go, but they're working on some transitional housing projects and trying to figure out where to place that. So we are not alone in this effort, which it's good to have other communities that you can talk to and reach out to. KHRC had a really big presence there, so we talked a lot about Lytech projects, what they're looking for in awards. Every year, they shift a little bit of what they're focused on in their award language, which was good. It had been a while since we had seen a Lytech project until we found out about the 4% tax credit award to the Union Water Tower project, which is exciting. So focus on affordable and a, a large footprint for apartments. So I think those are kind of the highlights, but yeah, happy to talk about it offline to have discussion and just share resources.
Just curious what your one action item was, the one thing you were like, oh, I'm going to do that when I get home.
Yeah, trying to think, boil it down to one. Yeah, so honestly, there was a lot of conversation from the, from the state level about Affordable Housing Trust Funds and how to utilize state matching dollars and federal matching funds for that. Affordable Housing Trust Fund is something that popped up in our housing study, and I'll be the first to admit that before my time with the City of Topeka, I have never worked anywhere, done anything with an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so been reaching out to folks that I've met from that and just trying to figure out what's the best thing to do with this. I know that, you know, we have this million dollars that I know if we don't use it wisely, we'll go really quick and make very small impact. So I think it's talking about how do we, how do we make that fund useful and hopefully how do we make it sustainable? So definitely be diving into that.
All right, cool. All right. Are there any other comments from the Commissioners tonight? Are you all ready to go? All right. I will adjourn this meeting. Have a good one.